Commissioner Tamian.
Here.
Commissioner Heideman, Commissioner Bohm, Commissioner Dunn, Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greatap.
Here. Stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, any additions or deletions to the agenda? If not, I'll take a motion, please.
Make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion to support, discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Citizens wishing to address the Environmental Public Works Committee. Anybody? Anybody? Okay. Updates, we have the 4A is the 2017 Drain Commissioners' Annual Report. I do not see the Drain Commissioner here, but you have the packet in your piece there. We can move this on to the full board, or whatever your pleasure is. Oh, never mind, we don't have to do that.
It's just an update.
We'll just leave it for now, and we'll talk later. Let's go to B then, the St. Clair County Road Commission 2018 Annual Report. Commissioner Lallan, you going to do the honors?
Thank you, I'm just going to do some introductions, and we have with us Sandra Clark, the Executive Secretary of the Board, and Ken... Forster. Ken is the head, the Chair of the DPW, and has been for quite a few years, and does a tremendous job with the DPW. He's also a member. Bill Bohm, Vice Chair, is not here tonight because of death of a friend, and we also have... Kurt.
Our Director, Kurt.
Our Director, Kurt. I know we have a large agenda today. I just want to say, thanks again to the Board for their commitment to the Townships and the Road Commission on the match money. It is something that is near and dear, especially to the Townships, because without it, they couldn't keep your local system in the shape that they do, and the Road Commission, it just doubles the money that you give us, and it's a tremendous program, and we hope you continue to honor us with that. With that, Kirk will come up and give a presentation. We have a very busy year this year, and he'll hit all the hot spots. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Evening, Kirk.
Evening.
Yeah, short presentation, I'll go through it fairly quickly. What I want to talk about tonight, and what's... Normally, we have a topic for you, what we're doing throughout the year, and that type of thing. As you know, we have 240 bridges in the county, the highest, second highest in the state of all bridges out there. 92 primary bridges, with an estimate of $39 million worth of work that needs to be done on those over the next few years. The Board has made a grand effort of putting additional funding, road funding that came to us last year, towards bridges, because it's so important to us. None of the transportation money that we get through gas tax actually is designated for bridges. We have to determine that money to go for that, and federal aid is normally used for bridge construction. What we're going to be talking about tonight, real quick, is innovations, and what we're looking at, the different items or options we have for bridges out there in the county. What this will show is what's called a tub girder system. We're one of the only counties in the state that have used these, and actually, we put, installed two last year on the Marine City Highway. Marine City Highway had three bridges out there that were weight limited. As you know, we've got docks on the St. Clair River. It was important when the ferry was running down there, that type of thing, for the truck traffic, and it basically closed that road, one of the second highest roads, or traffic counts as far as roads go in the county, basically closed that to truck weights. So it's important to us to get that open and functioning again, at least those bridges. What we're able to do with that, with a tub girder system, it's, we can put it in with our own forces, or use contractors to do that, we can use existing abutments to do the work there. As you can see here, there's a galvanized tub, or steel girder, in the side there, on the left-hand side, and then there's a concrete deck plate that goes on top of that, and they can be manufactured off-site. So it reduces the amount of time we spend out there with a closure. In this case, it was a 10-day closure, from start to finish on this product, and we did two of those out there at that time, so it helps reduce that. Now, these aren't applicable for all bridges. These were shorter spans, 25, 35 feet. This is a picture showing our crews. On the 25-foot spans, we're able to use our equipment, our crews, to install those, take those out, that type of thing. On the larger ones, we'll bring a contractor in and use their crane, or rent their crane from them to do that work. There is a lot of cost savings. For a traditional bridge of this type, this type of decking and so on would be about $240,000. We were able to complete each one of those bridges for $180,000 each, so quite a bit of savings there. This thing just shut down on me. All right, I'll keep going, and get a little flare back up. There's some other products that we're also using, and when this comes back up, I'll show you, but I might as well explain it real quick. We're looking at high compression concrete, UHPC, and the idea behind that is, the strength, the compression strength is much higher than normal concrete that we use. And right now, we're experimenting with closure pores on those types of things. So we'll go into a bridge that we have a lot of seepage through that bridge deck, there's water in between those joints, and we'll basically break those joints out, and replace it with this new type of concrete, and we've had great success with that over the summer. The difference on it is about 21,000 PSI on this new type of, or UHPC, concrete versus about 8,000 pounds per square inch on the other that we've used in the past. We have a reduction in water penetration, getting into the rod, that type of thing in those bridges, and it's worked out well for us. We actually did this beginning in the year with a demonstration project that included University of Michigan, MDOT, so forth. We're the second ones in the state to try that as a project, and you'll see, we'll be doing more and more of that throughout the summer. The other product we use is an epoxy overlay for bridge decks. We partnered with a local company, and they came up with basically a formula that we can use, that's a cross with epoxies, epoxy resins, and rubber, recycled rubber from tires, that type of thing. So you get the hardness of the epoxy, or the ceiling of the epoxy, but you get some flexibility to it. And that's a problem with bridges, because of course, there's beams under there, steel beams, and you have a lot of flexing going on with that bridge. If you've ever had the chance, and it's not...
Yeah.
I don't recommend this, but if you're ever standing on a bridge, or a busy bridge, during high-volume traffic, you'll feel that flexing in the deck, and that helps with that. The other piece we've got, we had a grant with the Michigan Department of Environmental, or the DNR, I'm sorry, actually, to do a crumb rubber, try a sealer out there. We were successful with that grant. So we're basically recycling tires. Those are basically ground down almost to a powder-type form, and liquefied, and we pour that onto a deck, and then we'll pave over top of that to seal that in. So we're recycling tires, keeping them out of the landfill, and able to take some benefit to our bridge decks as well. As far as our budget goes for this year, I'll go right into that. Bridge funding and road funding on the federal aid side, like I talked in the beginning, comes to us in a 95-5 match on bridges, and a 20-80 match on road projects. So what that means, we're able to go out there and get funds, apply for funds, 95% federal funds that we all pay in this room, that goes for gas tax, and the Road Commission has to come up with a matching fund of 5%. It's a great value for us, it's a great value for our local Townships, because they help us with some of the projects out there as well, and we can do a lot of projects with that. Over the last seven years, we've done about $66 million worth of work with federal aid. So you take a county of this size, with the road mileage that we have, that's quite an accomplishment, and we've got to have a shout-out to our engineers that do that, the people that... We've got some great staff in there, as far as engineering department goes, and are able to do some things that maybe other road commissions can at this point, so... Probably not going to make it. The other project, I'll just go through some projects we've got coming up this year, through federal aid. We've got about $9.7 million worth of road projects coming up this year. You know, we've all talked about the roundabout at Lapeer and Allen, that'll be going in, starting in first part of June. North River Road, we're going to be doing some paving out there. An important one is the St. Clair Highway Bridge, and that's important to us, because that was about a $3.6 million project, and we weren't able to fund that. We didn't have federal aid available to us at the time, we didn't have the funds within our budget to do it. So we called upon our legislators to help out with that, and we really got to thank them, when it comes to Shane Hernandez, Phil Padlo, and especially Dan Lowers, working very hard to bring that money back to St. Clair County. They did it through a special appropriation, and we were able to get that bridge done down in China Township. So that's something that doesn't happen every day, and it's that relationship we try to build with them, just like this county board does, to keep those monies coming, or staying in St. Clair County, and coming back as well. Number of other projects, and what we can... This will be, just for the folks in the audience, if you go to our website, this is on there, so the numbers, you'll see those in the presentation, so I apologize for what we've got here, so. Like Tim was talking about tonight, we have the match money program that you're aware of, $900,000 from this board. It's a 50-50 match that they use, that the Townships can go ahead and do road projects throughout the county. It helps us to continue that work, along with our local road funding assistance program, our ditching programs, and limestone programs that we have over and above the matching program, and we want to thank our Townships for cooperation in that. So the other thing that we have on here, as far as projects go, if you look at this, if you go on our website, there's a page on there, you can just click on Projects, you can scroll, a map will come up, and you can click on wherever you see those, there'll be lines in there for bridges and road projects. You can click on that, it'll tell you the project, how much the project is, how much is federal aid, state aid, Road Commission, and estimated starting date and completion date. Once that's out the bid, that'll be updated, you'll have real numbers, because we'll estimate, and sometimes the contracts come in under, a little bit over sometimes, but it'll have those numbers in there that are more accurate, and you'll be able to see them at that time. So that's pretty much it.
Dave, you've got questions?
Yeah, I got three, three things. One, if you could just give an explanation for the federal funding, and I know this one, for Riley Center Bridge that was done, I believe, two years ago. I believe that was an $800,000 bridge?
Yeah.
And what was our actual cost? 5% of that, $40,000?
Yeah.
So we're doing that with a lot of bridges throughout the county, and that's where he's talking about the federal monies, and we matched that with the village money. That was approved by the county residents, and I wanted to bring that up. Also, the $900,000 that he brought up, that the general fund does, adds to them. The Townships, historically, add more than $2 to one. I believe it's right now at about 2.1, so that adds an additional $3 million to the 23 Townships within the county for additional road work that would not have been done. He has a lot of other funds that he does a lot of the work with, but the Township's partner very well with the Road Commission. I just noticed on Masters Road, it's a historic bridge, you've got a counter out there, is that...
Yeah, you're going to see some work out there this summer, mainly on the end beams. The end beams, we're starting to see some deterioration out there, so we're going to be able to encapsulate that, and do some work out there to help get some of that load, you know, it's limited now, and hopefully get that posting off of that bridge.
Just one other thing, on the historic bridge, let's see if I'm correct on this, on the Masters Road Bridge, we have numerous historic bridges, that was built, I believe, in 1934. It's designated as a historic bridge, so you cannot tear it out. Is that correct?
Well...
Unless it deteriorates.
Yeah, there's rules in that. It's interesting, because a lot of these bridges that we've taken out in the past, the same thing. We had one bridge be delayed 16 years, just with historical date and that type of thing, and we have to find a home, believe it or not, for that bridge. There are places that will take them, if it's a small museum, or even another county, a county over, the other side of the state has a bridge park, of all things. They'll take that down and put it back up over there, so you'll see them across the state that way.
Any other questions for Kirk? Nice presentation, Kirk, thank you, you guys do a great job, and I would like to just let the audience know that the, we don't really control the Road Commission. They're what's called a component unit of the county. They have their own manpower out there, they have their own commissioners out there. The only real connection we have is we give them some money, and we appoint their commissioners. So when Tim Lallan was up there, he gets appointed by this particular board, so... But beyond that point, they're self-governing, they do their own thing. But I will say that they're probably one of the best working departments in the county. If a commissioner calls, because you have a complaint, you call us, and we call Kirk, that stuff gets taken care of. They do an awesome job of reporting back and forth, so thank you, Kirk. Great job. Kirk.
Kirk.
I'm being fiscally responsible, you're going to save me 50 cents? Thank you.
Conceptual initiatives? Nothing? Any old business? No new business? Smith Creek Landfill Activities Report?
You need a motion to accept Smith Creek's... I'll make that motion.
Support.
Motion to support, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, carries. Any other public works matters? On information only, we've got the Enbridge Plan Construction, it's in your packet, very interesting. Take a read on that, guys, if you haven't already done so. Enbridge is on its way here in the next, sometime in the next month or so, to address us, and some of that information that's in that packet will probably be addressed that night. We've got the DPW Audit Report, the Road Commission Audit Report, Parks Financial Documents. I believe that will be it.
I'll make a motion to accept the information only.
Support.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Receive and file?
So moved.
Support.
Motion to support, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Make that motion.
Support.
It is adjourned.
I'd like to call this meeting of the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners' Human Service Committee to order. Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Heideman. Commissioner Bohm. Commissioner Dunn. Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greatap.
Here.
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's human service agenda?
Make a motion to accept as presented.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Are there any citizens here this evening that want to address the Human Service Committee on any of the issues that our committee deals with? Seeing none, and wanting to move right along? Are there any updates? Conceptual initiatives? Under new business, we have a request from the library system for various closures during the next calendar year.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve this for final action.
Support. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Are there any other human service matters to come before the committee this evening? For information only, we have the St. Clair County Health Department Points of Interest. Our Health Department Director is here with us this evening. Could I have a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Receive and file packets.
Make that motion.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Support. Fastest report I've ever made. You did a great job.
This time, I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to order. We need to start this meeting with a public hearing. It has to do with the annexation for the Village of Cape Pack. Would you like to have a motion to open the public hearing?
I would make a motion to open the public hearing.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we have a public hearing. Does anybody want to address the annexation of Cape Pack?
Are we annexing Cape Pack?
Yes, to the city.
About a half acre of piece of land out there at the new truck stop. Can I have... Any discussion?
It's just a small parcel that was next to the Loves Truck Stop, which is a pond and a sign. It's our... The sign's there, the pond is there. It was a piece that was sold from the state of Michigan after the expressway was built, and at the time, it was in the township when the annexation took place. It was just a tiny little parcel. You can't drive to it, it had a walkway that got to the main road. It was one of their borrow ponds that they used to build the expressway. It is now used as a, I don't know, not an overflow, but they're using a retention pond, and there's a large sign on it. In the city, the township didn't want to deal with the zoning ordinances on that property when it entailed the village's property business, so it's just getting tied together.
Any further discussion?
Two more times you have to ask.
Any further discussion for the public hearing?
Comment.
Any comments for the public hearing? Any comments from the public hearing? Right, seeing none, I need a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Tamian.
Here.
Commissioner Heideman. Commissioner Bohm. Commissioner Dunn. Commissioner Greatap.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here. Okay, moving on to two. Additions, deletions, changes to the agenda, we do have one that needs to be moved to new business.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that Item A, the Resolution 18-08, on the Sheriff's COAM, be moved down to Item 7E, as in Edward.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. This time, do we have any citizens wishing to be heard for the Ways and Means Committee? Any citizens wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we will move to updates. Do we have any updates? Seeing none, conceptual initiatives? We have none. We have no old business, we'll move to 7A, new business. Resolution 18-04, annexation for the Village of Cape Pack, and this is for final action.
I move that we adopt Resolution 18-04 for the annexation of the Village of Cape Pack for final action.
Support.
Any further discussion on this? Greg gave us a pretty good rundown on it. Resolution, do we need a roll call? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion passed. Moving on to 7B, Resolution 18-06, CBA Sheriff's Deputies and Detectives 2018, 2019, and this is for final action.
I'll move that resolution.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Moving to 7C, 2018, Budget Adjustments.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead. Mr. Chairman, I move that we send these budget adjustments on to the full board meeting.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. 7D, Fleet Management Agreements.
Make a motion, we send it on to the full board?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Okay, at this time, do we have any other Ways and Mean... No, I'm sorry, 7E. Resolution 18-08, CBA Sheriff Supervisor COAM, 2018, 2020.
Make a motion, we...
You want for final action?
Just final action?
Yes.
Make a motion that we do this for final action.
Support.
Any discussion?
How many more units? One, two?
Two.
Two, okay.
Okay, we have motion and support, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Okay, we'll move on to other Ways and Means Matters. Do we have any?
No, sir.
Information only? We have none. Can I have a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Motion to adjourn?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we stand adjourned.
Call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners' Judiciary and Public Safety Committee Meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Tamian.
Here.
Commissioner Heideman. Commissioner Bohm. Commissioner Dunn. Commissioner Rushing.
Present.
Commissioner Greatap.
Here.
Commissioner McConnell, sorry.
Here. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
Make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Support. We have motion and support, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Citizens to be heard, we have a list here of people that want to get up and talk. We request that you address the board, not the audience. You can talk towards the audience, please don't talk, or, you know, refrain from... This is just a good issue where we can... You're here to talk to us, and ask us information, give us information, not ask us information. So we just want to make sure that it doesn't get carried away at all. You will be three minutes apiece. Commissioner Rushing.
Sergeant of Arms.
Is Sergeant of Arms. And first of all, we have Shavina Handandiz.
My name is Shavina. I represent the Standing for Change Page, which used to be the Protesters, which we're all still together on that. I just wanted to give a few factual points on what's been the talk about lately. Just a few points about the Santa Lac Humane Society. They've ran a successful shelter since 1993. Since Santa Lac has been successful for so long, they have already established relationships with organizations that fund grants, like Best Friends Animal Society, Matty's Fund, and the Pet Co. I can honestly say that with confidence, new 501(c)(3)'s with no track record have a very hard time receiving monies from grants. It takes at least three years of very hard work for new 501(c)(3)'s, and also of hard successful data before monies become available to them. Santa Lac Humane Society already has in place the program St. Clair County needs to excel, like a successful foster program. No need for any trial and error. Policies and procedures already exist, so programs with a track record of success can be just put into place. Santa Lac is also an all-volunteer-run shelter. This means volunteers are not only welcomed at the shelter, they are also necessary as a part of the shelter's existence. Anyone who thinks that this would not happen within St. Clair is very misguided. And that's it. Thank you very much for your time, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you. Next up, we have Iris. Harlanjali, very good.
I love when the commissioners change, and you all get an opportunity to pronounce my name. Thank you.
I didn't have a problem, I said Iris.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. As you know, I represent the Pet Fund, and it makes no sense to me at all that the main reason for not working with an out-of-county organization is that it's out of county. And one of the reasons I say that is because one of the leaders of the Positively Group lives in St. Clair but works in Macomb. And nobody questions her capabilities or her motivation because she lives in one place, works in another. So how can we use that as a criteria for us? The other thing I want to mention is we already have two very successful partnerships with Santa Lac. We have the Blue Water Conservancy. And we have the new one, the Community Foundation, that I believe you're working with Santa Lac Huron and St. Clair to increase tourism in the area. So you already have partnerships that are working effectively. And lastly, I think we have to keep in mind that Santa Lac did not approach us to run the shelter. The Board of Commission put out an RFP asking for help. Santa Lac replied to that. We view this as a partnership, a collaboration, that will only increase the value of the animal shelter. Thank you.
Next, Lisa, is it Allenbruck?
Hello. I am known as Lisa Ray in our volunteer group. And I saw the article in the Times-Herald about Santa Lac County Humane Society wanting to operate our shelter. I just want to know why the citizens haven't heard more information about this happening. I think some of us could have given some good input. As a citizen of St. Clair County, I'm letting my commissioner know that I would like you to take into consideration that I would not like Santa Lac County Humane Society to move in. I would like to continue volunteering through our volunteer group, St. Clair County Sheriff's Animal Control. And give us six months to a year. Give us a chance. We've been in there and we have made such gains being there. If Santa Lac Humane Society does take over, you know, they've got some volunteers there that are going to be helpful. I don't know if the whole place could be run on volunteers or if the Sheriff Department would still be putting money into that. But again, as a citizen, I want my voice heard, that that is not something that I would like to have happen. So please, commissioners, keep that in mind as we're all speaking in front of you today. Thank you.
Thank you. Maxine? Was it Maxine Wood?
Well, my name's Maxine Wood and I am a resident of St. Clair County in Birchville Township. And I am also interested in what's going on with the Santa Lac Humane Society coming in, getting involved with the animal control. But on, from what I've read and the little bit I know, I think it's a very good idea because I do go to Santa Lac Humane Society when they have their gatherings. And I love what they do. And I think anything that is positive for the animals and we can still volunteer, I think is a good thing. I hope, though, in the future, we'll see more detail because the problems have all been, it seems like, the lack of communication and not having the information to make a educated, sound opinion on what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. If somebody wants to talk a little bit longer, Commissioner Rushing is fairly new at this position that he has. And he really wants to tell somebody to get off that podium. Nobody's quite hit their three minutes yet. So somebody come on and give him a little action.
I can be asked to get out of train whistle.
Susan Atwater. I said it at the wrong time, didn't I?
I timed you to two minutes and 48 seconds. It's nice to see everybody tonight. I am a member of our local community and I live here in Port Huron. I wear several different hats. I am first and foremost a mother and a wife that lives here in Port Huron. Secondly, I'm an animal lover. And thirdly, I'm a president of a nonprofit 501(c)(3) that has a mission to provide animal welfare education, outreach, and information about resources to the public and organizations. We also provide temporary housing, if available, and help with transportation for any animals to their needed destinations. Wearing my personal hat, I have and always will be an animal enthusiast and have really become more of an advocate in the last several years. I like to look at things rationally. Yes, the topic of animal advocacy is an emotional one. And the only way to get things done without creating a he-said, she-said type of atmosphere is to use logic, facts, and a level business head. I can see both sides of the coin and have listened to both sides of this argument. I can honestly tell you that the reason that I helped start the 501 is due to the limited amount of education and outreach that is available to the public here in our community. I am by no means a person with large amounts of money to finance a nonprofit and provide everything that the community will and does need. I am, however, a person that understands what it's like to be stuck in a position and not know where to turn. I have said for the last several years that having animal control officers is a necessity for our community's safety. Having said that, I also personally believe the opportunity to work with an organization that is progressive, proven, and has the outreach and education aspects already set up will be a wonderful opportunity for our community. Now for my business hat. As I've said before, education and knowledge are power. It is time to enable our communities to obtain this education, learn how to make the community a better place to live, and how to participate in activities that will allow them to expand their knowledge and interest in helping others. A group with a proven track record in these areas only makes good business sense. As a nonprofit, I look forward to helping and working with an organization that believes in education, outreach, pet retention, TNR, and being progressive. I believe that Santa Lac County Community, excuse me, that I believe that Santa Lac County Humane Society will continue to encourage our community members to volunteer as they have been, attract and educate more volunteers, help others become interested in learning and becoming better pet owners, all while enhancing the life of our community members. The final decision should be one that will benefit our county and our community by enhancing the services that are offered to make living here as amazing as it can be. Let's remember that the destination is always worth the journey.
Thank you. Lisa Epley?
Thank you. I'm fairly new at this. I'm only here to clarify a couple of issues that were brought up at a last meeting. I am with the positive support. I am also with the volunteer group. But first and foremost, a citizen of this county. I also am with the 501(c)(3) Rescue Michigan Animal Crew, of which I am the foster, St. Clair County Foster Coordinator. These are my polls from St. Clair County Animal Control from 2015 until yesterday. No, I take that back, Monday. This represents my poll from this year so far, 2018. Why? Because the dogs are dead? No. Because the dogs were put up for adoption or pulled by me because of medical needs. I was called by Stephanie Agnash or emailed by Stephanie if there was a dog that was medically in need of any serious medical needs, of which my rescue foots the bill for with our vet. I polled a total of 63 dogs. Out of those dogs, 24 are seniors, seven to 12 years old. The list, the ages of which were claimed that they were put down, not the truth. 18 were pits or pit mixes out of those. Another mistruth that I need to clarify is with Wager's Pit Bull Mix. He was not sitting in animal control for 23 days without medical attention. He wasn't even allowed into the shelter because of the damage to his lower jaw. He was immediately taken to Waddam's Veterinary Clinic, who graciously offers their services to St. Clair County Animal Control. Wager's was treated, taken back. He was put on medication 23 days to let his wounds heal, where he was then put up for adoption, one day on the adoption list, and was adopted. Sweet boy, great boy. In reference to caring compassionate, I think that it's important to understand that Stephanie is caring and compassionate along with Ken, along with Scott, along with Amy, along with our sheriff, along with our under sheriff. It shows because I don't have to pull this many dogs anymore on a rescue list because they're getting adopted, which I think is phenomenal. I would much rather they be adopted than I have to pull them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ben Knops?
Good evening, board. Tonight, I just want to also clarify some misleading information that has been spread around in the recent future, or recent past, sorry. Right here, I have a copy of a Facebook post showing an Excel document of number of cats and number of dogs that have been adopted and euthanized. It's just general, adopted and euthanized. There's no distinguish between owner-requested and shelter. This was taken between January and February of 2008. It says that these are the facts on St. Clair County Animal Control. Three cats were adopted out, three. 87% killed. And just by that statement, I polled the intake and records from St. Clair County Animal Control. And let me see. If we remove the number of owner-requested euthanazies, so this is from January 1st to March 27th. The total number of cats that came in was 69. Owner-requested euthanazies was 40. So if we remove that number, the number of cats that came in was 29. The number euthanized was two. That's only 7% of cats that were euthanized, not 58%. Also, we, of those 29, 18% have been adopted. That's 62% of the animals that came in, not including owner-requested euthanasia numbers. As far as dogs go, the number that came in between January and February of 2018 was 63. They're stating that 19 were euthanized, which was 30%. If we take away the owner-requested euthanazies between January 1st and March 27th, owner-requested euthanazies was 29. We had a total of 116 dogs, including owner-requested euthanazies. So if we take away those 29, that's 87 dogs came into animal control. The number of euthanazies, three. Those were all aggressive cases. And so that's 3%, not 30. Also, the number of dogs that were adopted, 30% or 34%. 30 dogs were adopted between January 1st and March 27th. So the work that the volunteer group has been doing has been outstanding.
If you could wrap it up shortly, please.
I gave you your job. So the number of, the work that the volunteer group has been doing has been outstanding. And as a citizen of St. Clair County, I just want to request that our commissioners consider what our volunteers are doing there and that we could continue the work in partnership with St. Clair County Sheriff's Department at animal control. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Andrea LaFrance?
Hello, I'm Andrea LaFrance. I'm a lifelong St. Clair County resident. And my husband and I both still live and work here. I work with Santa Lac County Humane Society. I've been to the meetings before, but I've never been up here to speak. I didn't prepare anything tonight, so I'm going to be brief. Sorry. I just wanted to introduce myself, send apologies from my director, Carol Schmidt, who couldn't make it tonight. And thank you for all the work. And I know it's been going on a long time. And thank you for your care for the animals. And if anyone wants to reach out to us, we have an open door policy. You can visit, you can call us, email us, office@santaccountyhumanesociety.org. And we love volunteers and we want to keep a partnership. And we have an open door policy. So I just wanted to let everyone know. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Annette Mercantat?
Hi, good evening. Annette Mercantat. Here to speak as a citizen, but also my other hat is the Health Department Director. I live in St. Clair County, Whale Township. As the medical director, I just want to say that as an animal control goes, we are very pleased, very pleased with the work. And we have been all along. I don't need to tell you that bites, animal bites, are health and safety, health and safety. Animal bites are huge for us. We look for rabies, we look for other disease transmissions. And the animal shelter has been fabulous as far as working with us. They know what they're doing and just want to put that in there. As a personal citizen, I am an animal lover. I have adopted all of my dogs from the animal shelter. They're wonderful animals and I've had nothing but first-rate experiences. We have a whole department full of animal lovers at the Health Department. And we have animals show up in our parking lot. And we had a pit bull one evening show up in our parking lot. It was very friendly. I took him home and it didn't work out. It turned out this pit bull was deaf. And I took him to the Humane Society one evening because I realized I couldn't keep him. Humane Society would not take him. Our Sheriff's Department Animal Shelter took him immediately, held him until I could find an appropriate adoption place. He was adopted in a few days. Happy story, very cooperative. Similar situation in my home where I have barn cats. I live on a farm. My partner decided to bring the animals in and one of the babies turned up with a horrible infected black tumor over its eye, clearly not compatible with health, the well-being of my other animals. Again, no one would take that animal in at late hours of the afternoon. The animal shelter took that animal in. The deputy actually met me there, let the animal in. I would not have wanted to manage that animal on my own. So our animal control does a great job, both professionally on my side and personally. And I just wanted to put a shout out for them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there any updates? Seeing none, conceptual initiatives, none. There is no old business. Under new business, inter-local funding agreement between Macomb County and St. Clair County.
Make a motion we forward this to the full board?
Support.
We have motion and support. It's a $313,348 grant that I believe is 100% no match. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, 9/11 equipment, PFN conversion update.
Do we make a motion that we send this on to the full board?
Support.
We have motion and support. Any questions? Yes.
Just one, the cost. I believe this was AT&amp;T before, now we're going to fiber optics. What's the cost difference?
$13,923 is the cost of the conversion. We're going with, what was the electrites on the?
Peninsula fiber.
Yeah, to go to Peninsula fiber.
Peninsula fiber has been, has got everything in place for us. Or when they do get it in place, this is the tools that are needed to make the conversion happen on our side.
That'll be the cost to get it up and running. Do we currently have a contract with AT&amp;T that's our current provider?
The cost for the backbone of the system is actually paid by the state. The surcharge that's... The surcharge that's on your phone bills that goes to the state of Michigan pays for that. The county does not.
Okay.
Yeah, this was zero cost to us, other than this $13,000, which is a hard equipment purchase.
Yep.
No more questions. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, Sheriff's Office Commissionary Money Expenditure.
Chairman, I would move this to be moved to the full board?
Support.
Motion and support. Questions? Do you need... Sheriff, did you want to... We just got two more items. No questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the state of Michigan Medical Marijuana Grant.
Make a motion we send this on to the full board?
Support.
Could I have a explanation?
Yes, go ahead. Question, Commissioner Rushing.
Explanation.
Pardon?
On this grant?
Yes, $45,752.
And what's it going to do?
Under Sheriff Buckley.
Good evening. Your question on the medical marijuana grant, Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
It's $45,752. It's a 100% grant from the state. No match from the county. It's based on the number of medical marijuana licenses we have in the county. We've submitted $19,938 to the state for wages for medical marijuana investigations, and $22,813 for equipment. Tactical equipment, lights, shields, bulletproof vests, personal protective equipment, and eye protection.
Short and sweet. Did anybody else have anything? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Other judiciary and public safety matters.
Good evening, Board. I passed out a document to you all before the meeting just for a quick review. There's been much discussion on animals that were euthanized, particularly dogs seven years of age, and I have the impression any dog that age that enters animal control is put down. I brought you our numbers here, and this is from March 1st of 2017 to March 1st of 2018. And these are dogs' ages of every dog that was either adopted or rescued. In the left-hand column, and I'm not going to discuss cats, and I won't go over dogs under five, and that is our vast majority. But when you started, our ages, we adopted out one six-year-old dog, five seven-year-old dogs, five eight-year-old dogs, four nine-year-old dogs, and one 12-year-old dog. Then the column to the right are rescues that they were turned over to. Again, I'm not going to touch on those younger years, but two dogs that were six were sent out to rescue, five dogs that were eight years of age were sent out to rescue, four that were 10 years of age, three that were 12, one that was 14, and one that was 15 years of age. So there's a very large majority of these animals that are of that age, find homes, either adopted or rescued. So I just wanted to clarify that because there was a lot of misinformation on that prior meetings.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Information only? File and receive, receive and file packets?
I'll move that the packets be received and filed.
Support. We have motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good night. Thank you.